Wes is ready? Go ahead. All right. If CNET's all set, okay, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, if we could authorize for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we will go to the manager for announcements and zoom instructions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening for the April 16th Board of Supervisors regular meeting. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person here in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name and municipality of residence and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have just a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the WebEx video platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair and they wish to, and they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. And finally, a rule call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx video meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Heller?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, thanks very much. And up next, we have our proclamations for this evening, and we have three of them, and I'm gonna read each one. After each one, we'll stop and take our votes, so I will go ahead. First up, we have a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to recognize May as Bike Month. Whereas throughout the month of May, Ferguson Township will celebrate biking and the freedom, joy, and well-being it instills in riders in the community, and whereas bicycling has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, meanwhile, growing the economy of the center region, attracting tourism dollars and local business spending, and reducing pollution, congestion, and parking costs on our streets and roads. And whereas May 13th to 19th, 2024 is Bike to Work Week, and Friday, May 17th, 2024 is National Bike to Work Day. And whereas Ferguson Township supports the 2024 Bike Month events, which encourage residents and visitors to experience the joys of bicycling while promoting physical fitness and green transportation, and whereas Ferguson Township is proudly recognized as a bronze-level bicycle-friendly business, and the center region is a silver-level bicycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicyclists, and now therefore the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the month of May 2024 as Bike Month in Ferguson Township and urges all residents to join in this month of bike events proclaimed the 16th day of April 2024. And could I get a motion to adopt the proclamation?
This is Matt, so moved.
One second.
Ms. Omari, I'll second.
All right, any comments? I'll just say, I know there's a number of activities posted on the COG website, so I hope everybody enjoys those and takes advantage of that. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. We will move next to a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to recognize May 5th to May 11th, 2024 as Public Service Week. And whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas public servants embody the spirit of service and through their work provide protection and care, keep our community orderly, and continuously strive to improve the quality of life for others. And whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, train conductors, astronauts, nurses, laborers, computer technicians, social workers, and countless other occupations who, day in and day out, provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas since 1985, Public Service Recognition Week has been celebrated annually during the first week of May, and whereas this week serves to highlight the accomplishments of the dedicated public servants who work tirelessly on behalf of all Americans who rarely get the credit they deserve. And whereas Ferguson Township values the commitment of the township's staff, authorities, boards, and commission members, local partners, and volunteers who are public servants, working for the betterment of the community. And now therefore the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the week of May 5th to 11th, 2024, as Public Service Recognition Week in Ferguson Township, and encourages all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, proclaimed the 16th day of April 2024. And can I get a motion to adopt the proclamation?
Ms. Omari, so moved.
And is there a second?
This is Matt, I'll second.
Thanks, any comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just a real simple thank you. There's just so many people that work in service that we'd be here like all week, you know, thanking and naming every individual, but...
Yeah, absolutely. So I think it's a, it's a great event, it's a great week, and I appreciate the fact that the volunteers are recognized in that as well, so they make a very important contribution as well. So thanks to everyone for that acknowledgement, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. And we will move to our third proclamation, and this is a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to recognize May 12th through May 18th as National Police Week. Whereas National Police Week in America was created to honor and recognize the sacrifice and contributions made by police officers in communities both large and small, and whereas National Police Week held every year in May was created in 1962 through a proclamation issued by then-President John F. Kennedy. And whereas our community will always appreciate and commend the risks police officers take every day to ensure our community's laws are properly enforced and that public safety is ensured. And whereas now more than ever, the community also appreciates and encourages the community involvement facilitated by our police officers to both better serve and instill mutual trust, camaraderie, and positive relationships among our increasingly diverse population in Ferguson Township. And whereas police engage with and serve the public in the most varied and wide-ranging manner, and their efforts do not go unnoticed. And now therefore the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through 18th, 2024, as National Police Week in Ferguson Township, and encourages all residents to join the township in the recognition of the services, sacrifices, and efforts of the Ferguson Township Police Department makes to best serve the community, proclaimed the 16th day of April 2024. And I will take a motion to adopt the proclamation.
This is Matt, so moved.
And second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. And comments?
Again, thank you, and you know, chief to you and the rest of the police officers for all that you do, sincerely, we appreciate that.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, thank you. It's nice to have you here this evening, and we're happy to have this recognition time and look forward to that week, too. I'm sure there'll be some activities and other, other events going on that week. And we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Okay. Now we will move to public input. This is an opportunity for the public to make comments to the board on any items not on tonight's agenda, and if you have some comments, please make your way up to the podium and give us your name and township of residence.
My name's Wes Gleeb. Is this on?
Yeah. Is it? I'm not sure. Go ahead and start, we'll see.
Is this on?
Is it affirmative?
Yeah, I think you're, yes, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I just stood up and came to the podium because I haven't understood a single word that sentries or you have said. I don't know what's happened to the audio, but I, I know I have a hearing impairment, but I didn't really expect the microphones and everything to be gone. Is there something I can sign up for?
Yeah, so we could, I'm sure that we can arrange for a staff person to get a computer...
You'll have to speak up.
We can arrange for a staff person to try and get a computer that will stream the YouTube for you to read, the services that would be available for you to follow along through the caption, the closed captioning option.
Yeah, yes, they do the live closed captioning on there, so we could...
Or you can say that, or I'll have to learn how to read lips.
Yeah, no, let's, we wanted you to be able to understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Would you like that provided to you this evening?
Do you want that to say? Do you have it? I can get it, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
I mean, how loud does he, I'm just curious, do we need to test out volume for him to talk a little louder? I'm okay doing that if it's just talk a little louder.
Mm-hmm, okay. And we'll, we'll continue on with public input. If there's any comments on item not, items not on tonight's agenda, please make your way to the podium and give us your name and township of residence. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Miranda Stern, and I'm Ferguson Township on Butts Street, North Butts. Three items. The first, I think that Ferguson Township needs a graffiti rule like the borough has. The graffiti on the Minute Mart and the graffiti on the Winston Building is just accumulating, and my understanding is we don't even have a, any sort of rules about that. So I hope that gets addressed. The second one has to do with the safety on South Butts Street. There's no sidewalks, and we walk that most nights. The bus comes around the bend pretty fast. Your option is to jump into either side of the road where there's a lot of stones, so you're walking on the stones. There's also a bus stop, and the place to stand for the bus stop is right on the stones. So I think we need to have some sort of safety, safety issues addressed on South Butts. And the third one has to do with North Butts. The alley between Wes Gleeb's home and the hairdresser place, what's it, what's it called?
Grass Alley.
A grass alley, okay. When we come up North Butts now, at least two or three times, we have had close calls because the kids just pop right out of the alley onto North Butts, no stopping, not even looking both ways. So then it becomes the responsibility, and, and they're usually on bikes or they're on the motorized scooters, and so I think there needs to be some sort of stop sign for them. Makes more sense to have it for Grass Alley than that short expanse of North Butts Street. So I think that we need to, and especially if we end up with another high-rise with students, there's just gonna be more and more people, and we don't want to see anybody get hurt.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
No, I second that.
Thank you. Okay, other public input for items not on tonight's agenda? Well, I saw one more hand, so if there's not, for anything not, I'll look online. Not seen anything, so we will move on to the approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes. This is from April 2nd, 2024. Did anyone need any changes or corrections made to those minutes? Not seen any hands.
Section five, the second sentence, there appears to be a word or two missing. I believe it's referring to the fence. Just says difficulty with removing due to his animals of privacy.
Okay, so you would want the words "the fence" inserted there?
Yeah, I believe the fence was to be inserted.
Okay, I think that's a non-substantial change we can accommodate. Anything else? Not seen anything else, so I will take a motion to approve with that change.
Ms. Omari, so moved.
And this is Matt, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right. We will move to special reports and acknowledgements under diversity, equity, and inclusionary activities and acknowledgements. This month is Arab-American Heritage Month, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and World Autism Month. Earth Day is Monday, April 22nd. Arbor Day is Friday, April 26th, and the Ferguson Township Arbor Day celebration is Saturday, April 27th. That'll be at Two Deck Park, and there is information on the website about those activities. Should be a good event. We will move to COG and regional committee reports. Up first, we have the Human Resources Committee report with Jeremy.
Yes, at that meeting, just some things to note, we talked about the, looks like we're, you know, the job descriptions for the fire and life safety inspectors, looking at those approved in May and hiring expected by July. On the cost of living adjustment, we had a little bit of a presentation on that. Learned that each municipality doesn't use the same methodology, and that what methodology COG is currently using seems, isn't as volatile and appears to be the smoothest right now. There was also some concerns raised about prioritizing smoothing the budget over the cost of living adjustment, as well as even delays because I believe the current methodology has taken the cost of, the CPI index as of June, but then the employees aren't necessarily seeing that reflected in their pay until the first part of the following year. So that was just something that was raised during that meeting, so...
Okay, all right, questions for Jeremy on HR? Not seen anything, no hands, okay. All right, thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
We'll go to the Land Use and Community Infrastructure Joint Meeting with the Center Region Planning Commission, and Omari attended that.
Yes, so a couple of things. Number one, it was a joint meeting, and the Center Region Planning Committee, it adjourned, and there was a presentation on the Terrace Streetscape District there, and there was some interesting feedback for Ferguson Township. I think we may or may not have received a letter from that organization, but there were some concerns about a few of the things, kind of, that regionally, they thought there would be some more density as we got closer to the borough, as well as the, the commitment to workforce housing being vacant, not there. So I think we should be seeing that officially from that organization. Secondly, there was a, the, there's a bike survey out there, so please take a look at the agenda. There's a link, click on it. I filled mine out. It made me feel real bad about myself and my mobility, so trying to get folks out there, a little bit more change in behaviors. And I guess those are the kind of top two things that come to mind for me, and any questions? I'll pause there.
Thank you. All right, not seen any questions. All right, thank you. And we will go to, it looks like the Public Safety Committee was canceled this month, and move to Finance Committee report.
Yeah, so from the Finance Committee, a couple different things wanted to highlight out of that discussion. First off, the Capital Improvement Plan, we reviewed that at a high level. It will be moving to exec on, well, actually, I'm sorry, move to exec, but let me pause for a moment. It'll move to exec 416, and the municipalities will have comments, actually due by 8:00 AM on May 8th. So we're actually reviewing it here May 7th, the night before. There is some slosh in the schedule, so we are good there, but they are aware that we won't be reviewing it until May 7th. That was one of the highlights. One thing that I found interesting out of that discussion is that the guy, I should say, the formula that's used across the CIP is done differently by each agency within COG. I found that surprising. So we're gonna be talking a little bit more about that in our May meeting coming up here to better understand the calculations and the formulas used, because if you'll note, you know, Ferguson Township has the lion's share of a lot of the, well, all of the investments. So as you can imagine, I'll be paying special attention to that. A couple other things, let's see, the purchasing policy, we went through that as well. Asked some questions and inquiring about the sole source approval path, how, what that looks like. It turns out that COG uses more of a verbal approval for sole source justifications, which, you know, something again that I'll be kind of probing and trying to understand a little bit more as we go forward there. And we did have some conversation around the COLA, back to Mr. Thompson's comments about how it's calculated differently by municipalities in the year as to when COLA, how would I describe this? The calculation is based off of staff either at a point in time, say June 30th, that's when they look at everybody's staff. So other municipalities take an average over the entire year to look at what they're paying staff. So again, trying to align with something that makes sense for everybody. That was it. More information, of course, in the report, but happy to go deeper into anything.
Thanks, questions on finance? Not seen anything. I guess the only thing I was gonna ask about was the parks loan.
Oh, yeah.
And what was decided there and...
We did pass, pass a motion to go ahead and extend the withdrawal time. So since we didn't use the entire loan in the time that we anticipated using it, the bank has extended us, so we can go ahead and keep pulling towards, you know, towards what we agreed on earlier. So it sounds like there might also be some other conversation about expanding that, not just for the Oak Hall Parks or the Whitehall Regional, but also maybe for other parks. It sounds like there'll be some conversations around that, too. But we did extend it.
That's interesting.
Okay.
Okay, so and that'll be, that's the authorities, so we just, they can pick what they will do with it, so that's...
Yes.
Okay, but so we're thinking about expanding their options on that?
That wasn't officially, that wasn't put officially in the, in the motion. What was put in the motion was that we are not deciding on how they should spend the money, because there were a couple of other ideas in, as we'll see, within the agenda that they could do certain things, and we said, okay, we're not making a decision on those, we're only saying that, yes, let's go ahead and extend the withdrawal time period.
Because the authority decides anyways, right? Was that, yeah?
It didn't come up in that particular light, but yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that. Sorry, did I go around for questions on that already? Okay. And then I guess we'll hear about that for whatever's on tap for general forum, too. So we will move to Parks Capital Committee and the Park Authority Joint Meeting with Patty.
Thank you. We didn't have a quorum for either committee, so there were no action items taken, but we did discuss the CIP, and in particular, we really focused on how the boardwalk was listed in the CIP and expressed some concerns about a $6 million price listed there when absolutely no decisions or discussions have been made, and, you know, whether it was a phased approach or just a one-time thing, and just the worry of having it listed like that in the CIP because it's, the CIP can be a communication tool for future boards, future board members who might look at it and think, oh, it's there, it's proved, you're gonna see how big, but that was about it.
All right, questions for Patty on parks?
I, I was gonna say, it's unfortunate that a quorum of both entities was not achieved, but I thank you, Patty, for attending and representing Ferguson Township and advocating on behalf of our board and our residents.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. I'm happy to do that, of course. And I should say that Cory was there also, representing Ferguson Township for the authority.
And I greatly thank Cory as well.
That is good to hear. All right, well, thank you for that, and so I guess, you know, when we get the CIP back from executive, then we will make our comments on that and probably reflecting everything you shared at the Parks Committee meeting on that loan. Okay, well, thank you for that, and we will move to Executive Committee, which met today.
Do not fear, folks, the CIP is on its way. It was one of the many consent agenda items that we did approve today, so there, in addition to the CIP, there is gonna be also some other items listed there that you may even see at general forum this month. And then we did take a, got an update on the solar power purchase agreement. Final red line documents are still being processed. Hopefully, we'll see those here within the next month. Still no, certain timeframe when we'll get everything and be ready to make that final approval, but it, we, we keep getting closer and closer each meeting.
All right, questions for Jeremy?
Is the price tag still the same, CIP?
Not, not quite sure.
Well, it sounds like you didn't discuss it at all.
No, it was just a part of the consent agenda.
So it'll come back to us next.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's the question. So it sounds like there's a lot of input given at the various committees, but nothing's been, and I hope that some of the notes came through, yeah.
I was gonna say, I did provide, the notes that I provided here two weeks ago directly to the Finance Committee, everything that we had talked about to that point, so they were aware of those things, and I anticipate, well, I'll reiterate that again here in three weeks when we meet with them, you know, and have that discussion on May 7th.
Okay, great, so we'll kind of rehash a lot of what we did, but thanks for bringing that back to them, so I think... So I think we can all plan to really look at that thoroughly. I guess that'll be the first meeting in May, yeah, because then we have to have comments back, okay?
Yeah, they're due May 8th.
At 8:00 AM.
At 8:00 AM.
But we have slop.
Right, yeah, okay, I think it's just a way to make sure they get them in that week, so, okay, very good. Thought I might have another question for that, but I guess not, so we'll see everything. And then, power purchase agreement, so, at the General Forum then, will we get an update on the power purchase MOU? Maybe not.
I don't think so, because it was just an informational item, we did not make any action.
Okay. So that might be coming back to climate before it goes back to executive, maybe manager news?
Yeah, I think that it will likely not be in front of the General Forum in April. I think that we'll have it back in front of the Board of Supervisors, hopefully, soon. There hasn't been a confirmed date provided, so.
Okay, as long as we don't have to review it on behalf of COG for the General Forum at that meeting, that's the only thing I was wondering, so, okay, very good, very good, okay. Well, thanks very much for attaining all of those and for your reports and answering questions. Great, okay, so we will move to staff reports, and up first is the manager's report. If there's anything you wanted to highlight from that.
No, ma'am, I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, questions for the manager? Not seeing anything. Planning and zoning report was included. Any questions on that or comments from anyone?
Just a silly question, page three of that report, I didn't, can somebody help me understand that ticket count? Actually, that was a mistake on my phone when I was reading it the first time.
So I don't have it in front of me, but I, but I believe that the, so for example, it'll say abandoned. That's representing the number of tickets that were abandoned. So for example, if an ordinance enforcement officer or police officer are out patrolling, and they're starting to write a ticket, but somebody's coming out, they may very well decide to abandon the issuance of a parking ticket. And then I think there's another category that represents unpaid, so, or, what's the majority of 25 that it's representing?
That's the paid, yeah.
Paid, so that's saying, so those categories are broken up into what exactly, like, the status of parking tickets are to reflect based on the activity that was taken for that month. Does that answer your question?
Yes, are they planning and zoning related?
So our ordinance enforcement officer and our police officers, they will both patrol and enforce parking, and, you know, generally Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:00 on Friday, and Monday through Friday, or Thursday, 8:00 to 5:00, the OEO will issue parking tickets, but officers will issue parking tickets as they see a violation, including weekends and evenings.
Okay, so these are all related to ordinance issues, and that is parking primarily?
Only, that's representing parking, the issuance of parking tickets for the beginning of what may have started to be a parking ticket.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Public Works Director's report was included.
And Lisa, may I just make a comment?
Yes.
And I just want to say hats off to the Public Works team, seeing them out there in the deluge of rain that we've been having, insane, as well as seems like, while going around and picking up brush, when it's so, truly, hats off to them for all the work that they do, please, thank you.
Thankfully, the wind, the wind and the storm worked itself out on Sunday, brush, when the brush got collected this weekend, all that got taken care of then.
Yeah, I've heard a couple of thanks and compliments on the brush and leaf collection this past week, so please convey all of that.
Yes.
All right.
I had a question on the Public Works, the sinkhole over there off of Blue Course. Is there any cause for concern for other sinkholes in that area? Or like, have we done any kind of, when they were digging that up, because I was driving by there every day, it was going pretty deep, that, you know, kind of, what was the, did they look to see if there's other, what's, is there cause for concern outside of this little sinkhole?
So generally, in the springtime, we'll see an increased number of sinkholes, it's not uncommon. The one on Blue Course Drive, and this is the third time that it has opened, and we dig until the throat is identifiable, and we've had a genealogist on site providing support and recommendations. And we do have another area of which has been addressed. So unfortunately, I don't want to, I don't want to normalize it, but I will acknowledge that in the spring, we tend to see more sinkholes in the region.
Thank you.
All right, and the Chief of Police report, if there's anything you wanted to highlight from that?
You have the report in front of you, and we had our newest officer commence service here on April 1st. Trevor Latchett, he comes to us from Penn State University Police, and now he's in the field training program. So he'll be cycling through the different shifts with the train, field training officers to learn the geography, policy procedures, and engaging the community.
Great. Great, thank you for sharing that. Questions for Chief? All right, not seeing anything, thanks very much. Okay, we will move to unfinished business. First up, we have a public hearing on an ordinance of the Township of Ferguson Center, County, Pennsylvania, repealing the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 27, Zoning, Section 304, Terrace Streetscape District, and replacing it with Chapter 27, Zoning, Section 304, West College Neighborhood District, and we'll go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At a regular meeting held on April 5th of 2022, the Board of Supervisors awarded a contract to Mackin Engineers and Consultants for the professional service to conduct, for professional services to conduct the Terrace Streetscape zoning district rewrite. The Terrace Streetscape District is a mixed-use corridor along West College Avenue, and from the boundary of the State College Borough Buckout Street to the intersection of Blue Course Drive, this district provides a mix of commercial and residential uses meant to be promoted at a pedestrian scale. The consultant, along with Ferguson Township, held public engagement meetings and presented status updates to the Board of Supervisors, as well as facilitated a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, between the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission. The Board of Supervisors authorized an advertisement for a public hearing on September 19th, 2023, to take action on amending the ordinance, Chapter 27, Section 304. The amendments to Chapter 27, Section 304 will reduce the permitted maximum height to 35 feet for an entire, for the entire zoning district without incentives. As part of the amendment, the design standards found in Chapter 22 will apply to all new development, as well as building expansions and alterations. Additionally, the district's name, as written within the ordinance, is changed from T S, Terrace Streetscape District, to the West College Neighborhood District. Provided with the agenda is a recommended motion for the Board's consideration.
All right, thank you, and this is a public hearing, so I'll first open the public hearing for comments on this item. If there's anyone who wishes to make comments, please make your way up to the podium, I see one. Please give us your name and township of residence for the minutes.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Stern again, and I'm from Buck Street. I appreciate all the meetings that they had with us and to try to make, make this new district more like a neighborhood in some ways. My only, and I read it, and everything seems pretty right on. The only concern I have, and I don't know how many houses this affects, but when, there's only 10 feet on the side of a building, if that building abuts a home, that 10 feet is not very far away from the property line. I don't know, it's probably too late to make any changes at this time, but I guess maybe there might be an option that, in certain situations, that could be reconsidered, especially if there's a 35-foot tall building next to a private home. You know, that there would be some sort of option that there could be a change in that 10-foot rule. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other comments for, on this item, please make your way to the podium. Please provide us your name and township of residence for the minutes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Patricia Harttrest, and my husband and I own a small piece of property on Blue Course Drive. We've recently come into the township's radar as being owners of this property, so I was happy to see that some zoning changes are being considered. We have been trying to sell the property for probably a year, and there's a lot of interest in it, but every time, we run up against this brick wall called the Terrace Streetscape. So this, the changes are very positive for us, they're allowing us to do something with the property, allowing the township to collect some more taxes, because we've been paying for the taxes on the trees. And who wouldn't like to wake up to the smell of coffee and the butterflies and birds? Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, other public comment, if you could please make your way up to podium and provide us your name and township of residence.
Hello, my name's Mick Trombley, I'm the owner of Trombley Real Estate. I'm a representative of the property you just talked about. I also wanted to just say to you that I don't have a hearing problem, and it's very hard to hear you guys back here, I mean, it really is. My client asked me three or four times, are they on the Terrace Streetscape bet? And then you guys are talking about budgets. So just to let you know, I mean, I don't see any microphones up here, but maybe there are, but it's, it's very hard to hear. I just wanted to emphasize, I've been involved in this conversation for a lot of years, and it's been a lot more than a year we've been trying to broker this property, but also I was involved in a bigger discussion with the township, probably 10 years ago on this. I think the way you guys are going about this is visionary in the way it should be going, in a way, not just for this property, for the rest of them. But I'll just tell you, I've never had a property that I've had 40 phone calls on that hasn't traded, and this one I've had. It just, the zoning isn't there, and it's kind of unfair because the changes were made after they purchased the property to kind of put it in a situation where it can't sell, and right now, in the current zoning, it can't sell. And in this new zoning, we actually have some people that are very interested in doing it, and I think it'll be something positive for the community.
Thank you. Okay, other comments? If you could give us your name and township of residence, please.
My name's Eric Schmalls, I live in Ferguson Township on, and so, I've lived by the house, the new apartment building that they built. I just want to say thank you guys for all the work you put into this. I, I'm pretty generally happy with the new rewrite, so thank you.
Thanks very much. And other comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any more public comment in the room, I'll look online, not seeing any. Public comment? Okay, yes, if you could please make your way up to the podium and provide us your name and township of residence.
Good evening, my name is Chris Summers, can you all hear me? I am a landowner in the existing Terrace Streetscape District. I am a resident of the borough of State College. Wanted to express some concern about the existing rewrite that's taking place. Sometimes the pendulum swings too far the other way, and I think that 75 feet is too much. However, 35 feet is swinging the pendulum the wrong way. So we really have to take a look and maybe consider Center Region Codes memo that's going to be coming to us. I don't know when we expect that, so we get some regional input into what others think of the area. Just think it would be, would be best if we took a little bit more open view of, of the heights and what the vitality of the, of the neighborhood could become. I've lived in this neighborhood and around this neighborhood for my entire life. I went to Coral Street Elementary School. I can speak very well about the neighborhood characteristics, how the neighborhood's changed over the years, what we think it could become. But right now, it's a little stagnant, and it's most likely going to stay that way with what we're seeing here. So I would encourage us to go back and reopen this up, take a look, let's get Center Region Codes memo, see how they feel about it, and have some more discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, if you could please make your way up to the podium. And please provide us your name and township of residence, please.
I'm Darlene Rigglesworth, and my husband and I, we've had a property here for 41 years, and we've seen a lot of changes. There's one thing I don't know if you have addressed, but I had read in the first sheet that you, that you had put through about making College Avenue more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, and less traffic. There's a lot of traffic on that road, and in another month, I'm going to be 80. I really don't want to ride a bike, and I really don't want to walk on that street. I enjoy riding my car where I feel safe and secure. So please remember that before you try changing that road. There's a lot of traffic on that road, and it's all good.
Thank you. Any other comment, and we'll stay in the room here at this time. Any other public comment? Not seen anymore in the room. So we will go online. And Mr. Keough, did you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, my concern, having not, no, I don't own any property on this particular zone, area, but my concern is the 35-foot or three-story height limit. And it's not so much the visual issue of height limit, as much as it is if you leave the height limit at 35 feet or three stories, you're going to force parking on the surface around the building. So at 35 feet, building a parking garage as part of any development is economically just not viable. Therefore, if 35 feet stays as the height limit, we're going to force that, the use of some of this land exclusively for surface parking as development continues to go out to College Avenue, the extent of the Terrace Streetscape area. I'm not sure that that's the best and most appropriate use of this particular tract of land. I do believe that, that we need to reconsider this three-story height limit and, and have a further discussion about how, not the building, but what's going, what is going to impact around the building as we move this, this height limit forward. I just think it's a concern, and I think it's a concern that we may not be happy with the other results of having it be only a 35-foot height limit. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Not seeing anybody else online. Any other comments from in the room? Any other comments from in the room? And I'm not seeing any, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing and first ask for a motion.
I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the ordinance amendment.
All right, do your second.
This is Matt, I'll second.
Okay, and comments from the board? We start online with Patty this time.
Thanks, Lisa. No, I am happy with what we've come up with, in particular, the feedback that we've gotten from the residents in that area. And so I think for a lot of people, the 35-foot height limit is a problem, but that is not a problem for me whatsoever, particularly as somebody who lives in a neighborhood that sort of borders a commercial zone. We're grateful that we get to have gardens and et cetera in our, our homes and not being dwarfed by ginormous apartment buildings that, that seem to have a low occupancy rate. And so anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Yeah, I was going to say I want to thank staff and all the, all of those that have put time into this rewrite. This was a process that involved many stakeholders from residents and those with interest on the West College Avenue. Even our regional partners have looked at this, so this has been a very thoroughly reviewed ordinance and just have nothing further to add.
All right, thanks, Matt.
Yeah, for my time on the board, I can remember this very topic coming up at least two times, if not three times prior to this evening, to get us to the 35-foot, 35-foot restriction. So for me, it's, I think it's positive hearing the community come out tonight, you know, be in support of this. And I feel good knowing that we have had a lot of good conversations with the community and other stakeholders around this, leading us up to tonight. So my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And Omari?
So I'm the new person to the board, and I think it's very easy to, not being here for the past couple of years, kind of take a fresh view and then have some, some comments as such. And so I think, from what I see, I do agree that, you know, there's good, good rights there, but I do think that if I'm seeing some of those old meetings, I think there were a lot of things that were supposed to come together, like the new workforce housing ordinance that didn't pass a couple of months ago. And so there were some things that were kind of woven together, and so now that, that's not happening. There are a few things, there's some gaps, I think, and maybe somebody can help me with that. So number one is that with this name change, well, then the workforce housing ordinance as it exists, it won't apply.
No, what, what you have to do first is change this ordinance, and then you will have to go back through your zoning ordinance. Sorry, Christina, it'll probably be you. And all references to terrace streetscapes will have to be changed in your existing ordinance. But it makes no sense to do that until you decide to accept these new regulations. You also have to amend the zoning map, not to change the district, but just change the name. So it's, it's not unusual to have a, a two-step process here. If an applicant came in, they may make that argument, but they're still bound by the district, right? We can argue, yes, but we have, it doesn't change your liabilities, if you know what I mean. I, I understand what you're saying, but, but there are thousands of ordinances in this Commonwealth, where boards of supervisors go in and amend something. They never go back and amend the other parts of the ordinance that reference it. We see it happen in sign ordinances all the time, so that we have zone, new zoning districts that never appear in our sign ordinance. That doesn't mean that we can't still enforce our ordinance. So we can still enforce the remaining parts of the zoning ordinance, even though we're changing this name. Now, that does not mean that we shouldn't go back and clean it up. I'm not saying we shouldn't clean it up, but you don't have to do it all in one step.
Thank you. I think it makes it very confusing not to do it, at least in line with each other. I think it's going to be a while before we see the workforce housing ordinance and some of those.
Well, but the workforce, all I'm suggesting is that when you make this action tonight, that Christina or whoever on your staff will go back through your zoning ordinance, and everywhere where it says terrace streetscapes is going to change it to the new name. That's all they're going to do for now.
We'll conduct a manual search, and we'll identify where we need to find and replace. We won't do that until we have the action taken by the board this evening.
They'll also have to change, they'll also probably have to make some changes within the SALDO, because often zoning district names come into the subdivision of land development ordinance. So it's a, it's a search through your code to make that change and then come back to you and do it.
Sure. That's helpful. And so then that leads to my second concern, and that is, we, as I understand it, want to make a commitment to workforce housing. However, we're saying there's no incentive for workforce housing in this singular district. And I'm, I'm a little, that, that's dis, I would say that's a little disingenuous to, we're trying to open this thing up to the township, and then we're going to close it off here. So I, I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned about that, and probably think we should open it back up everywhere. And then if that's another seven, what's another seven feet? I, I, you know, I'd love to, to see if that's possible. And then last but not least, I do, again, I like, I like where this is going. I like the re, but if there is not a, for me, if there is, there isn't a, a rush, there's not some sort of, that I would, I would like to take a step back, clean up a couple of things, and then, and then bring it back. So that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And yeah, just only had a couple of concluding comments. I think, you know, I really appreciate staff's time, present and former staff on this, present and former board members and planning commission members that have worked on this. This rewrite process that has been going on for two years, I know it's taken a lot of patience from people and for the residents that have involved, involved in desiring this for a decade or longer. So I, I just want to acknowledge all the work that's gone into that. And I think there are some other changes made in this that are going to prove beneficial, you know, not the least of which is changing that the retail mandate for that bottom floor, because you've seen what's happened in the borough, to just a non-residential use. I think there's a lot, there are a lot of smaller changes in this that I think are, are important to note as well. So, all right, we've had a public hearing, and we've had our comment motion, your second. So I'm ready to take a vote, which is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for ordinance 1096. Ms. Stevens?
Come on.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
No.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The vote passes four to one.
All right, thank you. Okay, we will move now to a public hearing on an ordinance of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, repealing the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Subdivision and Land Development, Part 5A, Designing Standards for Development in the Terrace Streetscape District by repealing and replacing it in its entirety and amending Section 512 Sidewalks, amending Chapter 27 Zoning, Section 201 Establishment and Purposes of Zoning Districts, Section 401 Corridor Overlay District Requirements, Section 723 Mobile Retail Food Facilities, and Section 1102 Definitions. And we'll go back to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very similar as in the net, in the previous narrative, at a regular meeting held on April 5th of 2022, the Board of Supervisors awarded this contract for professional services to conduct the Terrace Streetscape zoning district rewrite. In the process of the rewrite, there were changes to Chapter 22, Part 5A, Design Standards for Development in the Terrace Streetscape, which were recommended as well. And the guidelines are intended to create distinguishable character, provide a sense of identity, prioritize and encourage pedestrian activity, and provide standardized streetscape areas that will aim to foster economic development. The proposed changes include removing the guidelines for buildings taller than 45 feet, amend the parking structure maximum height to match what was just approved with regard to Chapter 27, and adding front yard amenity requirements, and provided with the agenda as a recommended motion for your consideration.
Thank you. And this, too, is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comments on this item. I'll look in the room first. Not seeing anything. Not seeing any hands online. Seeing no comments. I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Patty, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the ordinance amendment.
Thank you. And we have a second.
All right, Mr. Thompson will second that motion.
All right, comments from the board, and we can start on this end this time. No comments, thank you.
No, thank you.
Jeremy?
Nothing further to add.
Patty, any comments? All right, thanks. And this is a roll call vote as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for ordinance 1097. Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance passes unanimously.
All right, thanks very much. We will move to new business. Up first, we have the consent agenda. Did anyone wish to remove anything for discussion? Not seen.
I don't remember who was on it.
Give me a second, go ahead and look.
No.
Okay. In that case, I'll take a motion to approve.
This is Omari, so moved.
Second?
This is Matt, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. All right, we'll move to a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, repealing Resolution 2024-11 and adopting a resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources in support of Autumn Wood Park Playground and Playground Replacement. And we'll go to Mr. Prader.
Thank you. At the March 19th, 2024 Board of Supervisors' regular meeting, the board adopted a resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources in support of playground installation in Suburban Park. However, staff subsequently reviewed the playground inspection reports provided by Center Region Parks and Recreation and determined an immediate and urgent need for replacement in Autumn Wood Park. Suburban Park's playground installation is included as Phase 2 of the development on the master plan. As a result, the board is asked to repeal the previous resolution supporting Suburban Park and replace it with a resolution supporting Autumn Wood Park.
Right, and this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comments on this item. Not seeing any comments. So I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to repeal Resolution 2024-11 and replace it with the resolution supporting Autumn Wood Park Playground Replacement.
Okay, do your second.
This is Matt, I'll second.
All right, any discussion on this item? Not seeing any hands, not seeing anything. Nope. Okay, and this is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for Resolution 2024-12. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution passes unanimously.
All right, and we'll move now to an update on the Baker Tilly 2024 for 2023 financial audit, and we'll go to Mr. Todd Brady for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, in accordance with Municipal Code, the appointed auditor Baker Tilly initiated their auditing review process to conduct the annual audit of the township. The Baker Tilly team is here on the first week of April to test payroll accounts receivable, accounts payable, and anticipate the audit will be completed or submission to the Department of Community and Economic Development no later than June. By the, on a way of, by the, by way of background, each Pennsylvania county, city, borough, township authority, with a few exceptions, has the responsibility to file, file an annual report with the PA Department of Community and Economic Development. The required, requirement comes from applicable code for either the county, city, or township, each of which essentially indicates the local government shall file an annual report of fiscal affairs with the Commonwealth on forms prepared and distributed by the DCED. The due dates for these filings are March 31st, April 1st, or June 30th of the following year, for which calendar year and entities, depending on the type of government. For townships, the filing deadline for form DCED CLGS 30 Municipal Annual Audit and Financial Report is April 1st. The township in the past has filed the DCE reports as noted October 17th of '23 for 2022, August 8th of 2022 for '21, August 4th of '21 for 2020, July 1st of 2020 for 2019, and March 18th of 2019 for 2018. Baker Tilly has provided notice on April 10th of 2024 to the DCED concerning the filing of the DCE reports. There's no formal extension process. Baker Tilly currently has all the requested reports and ledgers, and I'm providing any additional information in a timely manner, say day.
All right, thanks very much. Thank you for the update and the inclusion of this history of dates. I think that's really helpful. Anything to add from manager?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, other than, you know, I believe we provided a tentative timeline earlier at the beginning of the year, and as of now, we are, we are on track for that timeline. You know, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have with regard to present, or what I can answer to historical. Todd and I are both available to answer questions.
Thank you. And we will look for questions, sure.
If I understand, just the Home Rule Charter, we're supposed to have that report by April 15th, though?
Yes, as, as mentioned in our earlier meeting earlier this year, that we are, you know, based on the volume of work, right, our finance department process is now $1.2 million a week in accounts payable, and that is not what it was back in 1979, when the ordinance was written. And so we had certainly wanted to bring to the board's attention that there have been concerns based on recent submissions, that that date may certainly be, you know, at, at the consideration of the board, one to consider amending and/or understanding that meeting that deadline may be a challenge. But we are, we are moving forward.
I, I think in the future, you know, I'd just like to understand a little bit more about that, and any impacts to staff with a delayed audit, what that means, or does that crunch timelines for other things for you, or other considerations, if this is later? And maybe this is a future discussion, but...
So it doesn't necessarily impact us. What it can have an impact on is COG. If we are unable to produce the DCE report in, at the time when COG begins their annual budget processing, then that can impact only because they look at our numbers from the, the previous fiscal year to inform our 28% contribution for the formulas that are determined by their finance director. So the impact admittedly would be that if we are unable to get it to them by, you know, July, it, it can become perhaps a challenge if they're only looking for the DCE report. However, there are alternative reports that we can provide that, that would be just as reasonably accepted in terms of having those numbers.
And I just want to clarify, the, the Home Rule Charter discusses the audit, not these DCED forms. So one of the issues that I think came about is that we still have municipalities in this county, as well across Commonwealth, that do not do a formal audited statement, right? They don't pay for a firm to do an audited statement. In fact, if, if they don't get any grant monies, most of them don't. In fact, if they don't get any grant monies, most of them don't. There's actually legislation pending to increase the salary paid to auditors. You guys don't elect auditors because you have a Home Rule Charter that says, "We're not gonna have an auditor." But if you go to Patton Township, they could elect auditors. Part of the problem here is that your staff is asked to put in a DCED report, which typically the accounting firms who are doing the audit do. And I think, you know, Baker Tilly understands what they need to do. But at the same time, you are also getting a financial audit that's required because your outside agencies, your lending, you know, capacity or grant capacity want an audit in that format. So I'm sure the April 15th timeline was timed because that was tax day and that makes sense. But it may be worth looking at what all those timelines need to be in terms of operating. Because it is not unusual that you are after April 1st. It is because I can tell you right now, Patton hasn't done their audit either, right? They're in the process, they're in the same. And I only know this because as the solicitor, I have to do an audit letter. And I can tell you when they get requested and when they go out. So it's not, you're not that far off the beaten path here.
That's excellent. Again, I appreciate you also bringing up other things that might rely on this, credit, et cetera, with the township. So, yeah, I think more to maybe discuss at a later date, just to have a better understanding as to what that report does, how it impacts, you know, business at the township, residents, et cetera, with any delays and things that we might see with getting credit, things to that extent. So, okay, great. Thank you. That's it.
I just want to say thank you for getting this out. Because I know that this was a, I think last year, there was some trouble. There was some.
We didn't have finance. Staffing levels were low.
I was gonna call it a concern, but, you know, if there was an issue and resolved now, thank you for kind of getting to this point. I know we talked about this, kind of, this is not the township of 10, 20, 30 years ago. And so with that, there's a lot more. And audits now now taking a little longer. Like, I see this in the commercial side as well. So we definitely need to take act, I think as a board, we need to take action on the charter and the date in there. Because I don't see us submitting, getting an April audit done unless we do something like on the internally where we're saying, hey, Baker Tilly, start coming in November, testing the January payroll of 20, you know, and then maybe doing some things there such that they're done by April. But, you know, that's also, you guys are trying to close out year-end or something. So there's some difficult, and again, I see this in the commercial. And like outside of this, I'm in the commercial world. So I see that and I understand the challenges of doing so. So just throwing out some options for doing it, but it is tough. So I'll pause there for other questions from others. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jeremy, questions?
I would just add, if it's my understanding, the different methods of getting that audit out, each one comes with its own pros and cons. So it's just basically going with the one that's gonna make the most efficiency. Yeah, the one that's most efficiently able to get out.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'll chime in a little bit. I think, you know, both Supervisor Heller, Supervisor Patterson, and Supervisor Thompson are all raising great points. And there is a little bit of, you know, there's some pros and cons to both, to the method that are out there. And while I would say we certainly can, you know, ask for Baker Tilly to come earlier. And then, of course, if they're unable to meet that, that may be a conversation, maybe next year we want to budget to do an RFP to solicit, you know, alternative options. I will say that I'm very grateful for Baker Tilly's patience, though. However, had it not been for their, you know, long, you know, number of years of providing these services for Ferguson Township, I'm not so sure that last year would have been. And I'm careful to say the word smooth, but as smooth as it was, given that if we didn't have an auditor that had been doing the township's audit, it would have just taken a little bit more time of staff. But I will acknowledge that the pros and cons are present. And there's not a wrong way or a right way here. But for example, by not bringing Baker Tilly in in November, December, or even as early as January, it allows for us to continue to process invoices that the township receives. And I'm getting into the weeds here, so I just want to be cautious and careful. Just, I'm giving you the vision here, however. By keeping the fiscal year books open until January 30th, which is general practice, invoices that might come in, say, for example, the pipelining project that you may recall, that we were expecting to have progress further advanced by the end of December 31st of 2023. But we had an unexpected emergency, that we had to put everything to a halt. In the scenario where they would have, you know, mobilized and got back into getting the job done, maybe by the first or the second week of January, we could have gotten that invoice, processed it, and charged it to the fiscal year of 2023. And an alternative where we close the books December 31st and we don't have a buffer of 30 days, therefore, what you see is you're gonna have overage of those expenditure accounts. And then the other issue we'll be talking about years down the road is why are these accounts and funds exceeding what was budgeted? And it's because of, you know, adding on additional unanticipated and unbudgeted carryover funds. So, you know, it's not, it's not that I'm, you know, providing an excuse. It's just acknowledging that there, much like Supervisor Thompson said, there are pros and cons. And since I've been with the township in 2018, to my knowledge, as far back as I can, you know, recall, just by looking at the books, that's the approach the township takes, is that we keep the books open until January 30th, and then we close them. And it just allows for that buffer for expenditures that were budgeted in the physical, the previous fiscal year to close out in the budgeted year. It allows for a little bit more accuracy.
Thank you for that. Patty, any questions or comments? No. Thanks. And I'll just, you know, acknowledge that the manager had shared before about different things the township has taken on, the issuance of the bond and the single audit that's now required because of our federal COVID funds. So those things also in the past couple of years have complicated our audit process. So, and that had been discussed previously. So thanks for all that information. Thanks for discussion. And thanks very much for the update. And if there's nothing else, it looks like there is a motion to accept the update. If someone would care to make the motion.
Madam Chair, this is Omari. I move that we accept this update on the Baker Tilly 2024 financial audit.
This is Matt. I'll second.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say no. All right. Okay, moving on to communications to the Board. Is there anything anyone here to share? Looking online first at Patty.
Thanks, Lisa. I just wanted to share that a COG employee went out of their way to seek me out and give their thanks to the Public Works Department. We talked about it earlier, particularly the leaf and brush collection crew and what an outstanding job they do. That was it.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. And that's great that somebody shared that with you, too, to pass along. Okay, anything else? Yes.
I had a couple of things related to both the financial audit as well as a question relating to the size of the wards. And after censuses, if we've gone ahead and recalculated the ward dimensions based on census data that's come back. So a question I have to follow up with staff about. Also, parking site issues in Pine Grove Mills, as well as parking spot assignments potentially for Pine Grove Mills. And then finally, a broken stormwater pipe that remains in Pine Grove Mills.
All right. Thanks. Anything else? No? Okay. And I'll point to calendar items. We have a lot of items underneath here, which will, can be found on the township website. I'll just point out that Watershed Cleanup Day is April 20th. I know they're looking for volunteers. The Arbor Day Celebration I mentioned earlier is April 27th at Two Deck Park. It's a great event. And information, again, is on our website. And I'll also point out that Spring Bulk Waste Collection is May 13th to 17th. So if there is nothing else, I'm.
Is this our last one?
No. No. We'll have fall.
The contract won't be till next year.
Ah, fall. Our second to last one. All right. Got it.
Yes.
Actually, we might get another spring into it.
Big announcement for the fall one. Yes.
Okay.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I'll second, and we adjourn. Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Patty.